I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nothing under public attendance, correct?
Correct.
Agenda adjustments?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. On personnel, item four L, we are going to remove Erin White, and we are going to change that to Jason Hawkins.
Okay. Anything under personnel, student achievement, or recognitions?
There is none.
Okay. Nothing under student discipline?
No.
Academics?
Yes, so at your place, I have provided each of you colorful graphs. This is a copy of the West Virginia Balance Scorecard for Lewis County. So the top page that you have is all elementary combined, and then you have each elementary separated, and then you have middle school and high school. I'm not gonna go, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time going over all of that. Information that you need to know, where there are yellow boxes with nothing in it, that means that we do have students in those subgroups, but those subgroups are not big enough for them to count for us. Also, if they are red, then that means that we do not meet standards. If it's yellow, that means we partially meet. If it's blue, it means we meet, and if it's green, it means we exceed standards. So as you can see, as you flip through theirs, some of our schools are making progress and are meeting the growth indicator, even though we may not meet the exact proficiency percentage that's required, we are showing some growth. So I wanted to make sure that you had the necessary information that you needed as we continue to talk about student achievement.
Yeah, thank you. We have one delegation this evening. Ms. Coe? Come on up, ma'am. So, I wanna let you, you're welcome, come on up. Here, I'm not sure you've ever had to present, but unfortunately, we're not gonna be allowed to talk back with you, okay?
Yes.
We're gonna pay attention to everything you say, if it's anything specific about a student, we can add that, okay?
Right.
You can talk in.
Okay.
And we will limit it to ten minutes, is that okay?
Yes, absolutely.
Good evening, thank you, is that good enough?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Peggy Sue Coe, the itinerant elementary visa teacher whose resignation is on the agenda this evening. Because they are losing another new staff member, colleagues at Roanoke Elementary School asked me to speak this evening to provide you with an outsider's perspective on teaching in Lewis County. Last year, I joined the staff of Jane Lou Elementary School as a fifth grade teacher. The position I was hired for had gone through several teachers, and it didn't take long to understand why. In the fifth grade classroom next door, one student frequently terrorized staff and students, while another continually assaulted the aide who was expected to work with him. As I sat in a room one day, I listened with dismay as staff members spoke of injuries. One had suffered with a broken toe and finger, a blackened eye, a battered cheekbone, and back sprains, while another had bruises on her lower torso, and the list went on and on. They spoke as if this was commonplace and simply part of working in public education, but to me, it sounded like a group of bad housewives sharing horror stories of their abusive spouses. It took more than half a school year to have that child removed from the classroom. The instructional aide who was being assaulted bid on and was transferred to another position. I also bid on and was transferred to my new position at Roanoke Elementary School. Just over a week ago, on the nineteenth day of school, for the first time ever in my teaching career, I was assaulted by a student. Although this child has a history of assaulting both staff and students year after year, his consequence was simply being sent home Wednesday afternoon following the incident. He returned to school on Thursday and attended classes as if nothing had happened. On Friday, during music special, this student punched a classmate in the eye. He finished the day in school with a staff member and returned to classes as usual on Monday, again as if nothing had happened. The week prior to these offenses, in the presence of other staff and classmates, this same student violently and repeatedly stabbed a paper with a pencil and then beat a wall with a backpack. Am I the only person in this room who sees how unacceptable this is? Am I the only person in this room who believes that our children and staff deserve a school environment that is a safe haven, free from violence? If I were to ask members of this audience to raise their hand if they have been assaulted by a student, have witnessed another staff member being assaulted by a student, or have witnessed a student assaulting a classmate, I think you would be stunned and disheartened to see just how significant an impact this is having on your school community. To my understanding, each building has a handful of disruptive, aggressive students who year after year have little accountability with no significant consequences, and who continue to exhibit inappropriate behaviors disrupting the educational process for all. At this moment, members in the community are trying to cope with the recent bus accident, which resulted in injuries to the bus driver and to some students. It has been said that inappropriate student behavior distracted the bus driver, causing her to lose control of the bus. At the very least, the bus accident should serve as a wake-up call that behavioral issues have gotten out of control and something needs to be done. When I submitted my letter of resignation to Dr. Stewart, I also included my reasons for doing so. Her response was consistent with the rhetoric that staff has repeatedly heard here in Lewis County. The students you have referred to in your email are all students with disabilities. We have an obligation to provide a free and appropriate public education under both federal and state law. While I agree with you that no one should be injured while educating students, the question for whether their behavior is a manifestation of their disability is at the forefront. All students have a right to be in their least restrictive environment to receive their education. As I read her reply, I sighed and wondered how such a different perspective of appropriate public education and least restrictive environment exists in this area. Yes, under the law, students with disabilities have a right to a free and appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment. However, the terms appropriate and least restrictive are vague so that students with disabilities can receive individualized instruction that is unique to their disability. First and foremost, their education should be appropriate for their specific needs. What if their repetitive inappropriate behaviors are a manifestation of being deprived of an appropriate education year after year? What if those students' needs were better served by an appropriate life skills special ed program, or an intensive emotional support special ed program? What if the least restrictive environment for those students means spending more time in an environment learning the skills necessary to be functioning members of society, and less time sitting with their grade level peers in a classroom where they do not have the prerequisite skills or capacity to learn that grade level content? What if, once students with disabilities are receiving the appropriate instruction and have the proper placement, inappropriate behaviors dissipate? Until changes are made and behaviors improve, it should be made clear that special education students are not exempt from the provisions of the Safe Schools Act, which ensures that all students receive a free, appropriate education in a safe environment. According to West Virginia State Board Policy 2419, Regulations for the Education of Students with Exceptionalities, Chapter Seven, Section One states, "School personnel may remove any student, including a student with a disability, for up to ten consecutive school days in a school year if the student violates Policy 4373. These removals must be applied to the same extent as they are applied to students without disabilities. School personnel may remove a student with a disability for up to ten consecutive school days per incident for separate acts of misconduct in a school year if the removals do not constitute a pattern resulting in change of placement. According to West Virginia State Board Policy 4373, expect a behavior in safe and supportive schools. Battery on a school employee is a felony offense, which will result in mandatory out-of-school suspension for ten days and one mandatory calendar year expulsion." I would like to finish by acknowledging the positive things I've experienced in Lewis County. I applaud your efforts to address behavioral issues with utilization of the PACTS program. One cue in the PACTS program is PACTS Hands. PACTS Hands help, PACTS Hands never hurt. The PACTS program is connected to Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs, a popular psychological theory used to explain what drives human motivation. Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs is depicted as levels in a triangle. PACTS addresses the second level, the need for safety. The first level is physiological needs, which are the most important and most basic human needs, including food, water, shelter, clothing, and sleep. Again, I'd like to applaud your efforts to meet your students' needs. Every day, I see your cafeteria staff ensuring that students are well fed for breakfast and lunch. I see your CIS staff providing resources, including food, clothing, toiletries, and school supplies to students to take home. I see an instructional aide watching over a student who is napping in a quiet location. I see a secretary taking a student's temperature. Finally, I see teachers, aides, and support staff who have so much love and compassion for your children and community that they remain committed and loyal to teaching in Lewis County despite the challenges they face here. They all deserve and need your support, and your students need a safe environment to learn. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to teach in Lewis County. I wish students and staff much success this year. If you'd like, I'll print out handouts of the references for what I had mentioned. You're free to keep those, those are just copies.
Thank you.
Whatever.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. All right, thank you. Moving along the agenda, approved minutes from the previous board meeting, September ninth, twenty twenty-four. Do you have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Consent agenda. Use of buildings and grounds. Injured at Heath Christian Club use of Polk Creek, shoot, I'm sorry, Peterson Central Elementary School, music room, art room, cafeteria, and gym for after-school club meetings, October first, twenty twenty-four through April thirty, twenty twenty-five, three fifteen PM to four thirty PM. Nate Stansberry, City Manager, City of Weston Truck Retreat, use of ROBMS parking lot and athletic complex, October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, nine AM to ten PM, pending insurance. Do you have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Finance. Approved payroll payments and bills in the amount of four hundred seventy-nine thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars and twenty-six cents. Do you have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Review and approve monthly financial report for August twenty twenty-four. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion.
All seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Consider and approve the budget journal entries for August twenty twenty-four. Do you have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
All seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Review and approve the annual financial statements for fiscal year ended June thirty, twenty twenty-four. Information will be available at the Board of Education meeting. Do you have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second?
All second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Personnel.
So that was posted today, this afternoon, the updated personnel, along with the one agenda adjustment that was made during the meeting.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Reports and discussions, facility and construction update. Mr. Dumont, please.
Working at Jane Lou. Working at Jane Lou with Miss Nestle Road on some plumbing stuff, that the, the kitchen's been flooded a little bit. So we're gonna work on getting some plumbers in there, and add some issues with the pre-k, air conditioning in the pre-k area. Need to get some folks out there. Roanoke, we're still working to get, with the contractors, to get the front doors to stay last, like they're supposed to. They fixed them once, but they're bouncing again. And I believe somebody was up there today, checking the skylight, they looked at the skylight today, this morning, something. Peterson, we're looking to upgrade the man trap and fix some minor issues that they have, just in the office. And that will be based on what happens at, at the high school. We're upgrading their man trap right now with a new intercomb and a new button release system. So if all that works good, then we'll take that.
Was that relevant to putting the buzzer in Missas's office whenever I was out there Friday?
You talking Peterson?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Yeah, if we can get a good one with, if Jamie's, what I don't wanna do is go out and pay for two of them, neither one of them working. So let's see if this one works out here.
Makes sense.
And then at Leading Creek, they should be getting molds this week for the playgrounds. And Bland, has had issues in room three-ten with no AC. We're trying to work on that with PIMCor. It's one of the newer units, so we really can't touch it. Maybe if we can fix that part. So, any questions with that?
I know you've, I know you've been overwhelmed, and, you know, I'm sure half of it's a staffing issue, and what my biggest question is, is the equipment. I'll be very intrigued whenever you go around the schools and you kinda get your feeling, how we feel our cleanliness is. I know that you haven't had time to do that, fully understand.
Not lately. I've been out and about.
You have.
At the beginning of schools, I got to go out. Now, some places were good, other places not so much.
Sure.
But, yes, personnel has been an issue, numbers-wise, you know?
Absolutely. If there's things that we can do that they.
People take off.
That they need.
I mean, I need to know who needs, like what sites need overtime. I can't just say, because of the service personnel laws, I just can't say, hey, I'm gonna give you overtime today. Like, it's a bidding process. They have to come in and say, Ryan, we'd like someone here for overtime on Saturday to clean. And I put that out to bed and see who that goes to. So that's sort of, that'll help, once we can get that underway.
Very good, thank you.
Hey, Ryan, any update on, on Robert L. Bland, on a update on when that piece is coming in to finish up down there?
Uh, he's, uh.
The platform?
Platform.
No, no, I haven't heard, haven't heard. As soon as, as soon as he, I don't know how you can tell me. He's gonna let me know as soon as it gets ready, before it even comes, whatever meaning, to know what day it'll be here and all that stuff to get it prepared.
Thank you. If you want to get a staffer, tell us about your job responsibilities.
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
Heck, yeah.
Okay, so, on the maintenance side of things, you can sort of get a feeling of, you know, I try to get out as much as I can. We have three maintenance personnel. That's not enough at all. Those three guys work their tails off. And, I mean, they're not old, but they're getting up there, and they could retire soon. And when that happens, we don't got anybody beating the doors down. I mean, we're short a plumber right now. You know, Roger's position's been posted for a while. So, every time something serious comes up on the plumbing side, we gotta contract that out and try to get it fixed that way. But those guys do a great job. Donnie D. and Stan, they do great. The school safety side, something that is really, really interesting for me, getting the ins and outs of all that stuff, putting together the crisis response plans and things like that to make sure that these kids are safe in the, in the event that something bad were to go down at schools. And I'm actually head of team, I'm not headed. I'll be sitting in my office for two days, maybe watching a virtual conference that Shep Gossett got me in, and then I'll be going in October down to Charleston for a school safety conference with other safety directors across the state. So I'm looking forward to that stuff. Now, for the easy side, is the transportation side things. And we've been busy. Drivers have been great, though. Pulling together, working, helping each other out, volunteering to help out with runs and pick kids up. And just overall, pleased where we're at. I think we're moving in the right direction. We're not there, but we're getting it, you know? You spoke of the cleanliness stuff. It goes more than just inside the schools. It's, you know, I mentioned to Dr. Stewart, when folks come from out of town, they're now coming to see how many buns and burners we have. And I'm all for academics, don't get me wrong. But those folks that come from out of county in, they see your athletic facilities, and they think, this is county. We gotta go to Lewis County. No, hey, we get to go to Lewis County. We have to go to Lewis County. It's their thoughts when they come play us out of county here, you know, whatever sport that is. I'd like to get that side cleaned up, along with the insides, to get it looking really nice for me. Because, again, when they come into the gym, a lot of places, they walk through the cafeteria. How clean is it? Are the floors stained? Are garbage cans overflowing? That's an issue. So, we're gonna try to get that stuff fixed and get back on the right path and keep moving forward.
Well, credit to you. I understand that we've already got maybe blinds on order for the middle school.
Trying, trying to get there, yeah.
That's fantastic. And you're talking just about sheer aesthetics. I believe you and Dr. Stewart have a meeting, maybe regarding, in my opinion, one of the bigger eyesores that's been coming into, in the city of Weston. That's what I was, the old ALC building, the paint filling off there. I think that that's something, if we can partner with somebody that's willing to help there, I think it's awesome to create that synergy.
Yeah, excited, excited to get in there and hear what they have to say.
Absolutely, that's great. Anybody have anything else?
Yeah, I wanna thank you. I understand the situation up there right for was took care of, and I appreciate that. I know, I know the parents knew, so job well done.
Very good, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, consider and approve the agreement between Lewis County Board of Education and Berlin Church for use of property on Berlin Road, Berlin Church Community Park, four four-two-three Berlin Road, Weston, West Virginia, effective September twenty twenty-four. Do you have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
All those, any discussion, I'm sorry, any discussion, or?
So, this is occurring because Berlin Church is leaving the Methodist Conference, and so they're changing their name of their church back to just Berlin Church, and so therefore the agreement needs to be updated. Also, I guess the agreement has not been in place for some time. When we went back and looked at minutes, it was actually, the board had given the property to the Lewis County Commission in minutes, but none of the actual documentation ever took place to make that happen. So we still own the property, which is why the church is now asking us if we can put this agreement back in place.
Okay, makes sense. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Consider and approve a contract between Lewis County Board of Education and Felicia Corley to provide mentoring for two school psychologists in the amount of one thousand per semester, effective through June one twenty-five, twenty twenty-five. Do you have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Consider and approve an agreement between Lewis County Board of Education and Blend Educational Consulting, Teresa Blend, to provide special education services effective August first, twenty twenty-four through June thirty, twenty twenty-five. Do you have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Johnny, you made the motion.
Second.
Jimmy, second. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Consider and approve memorandum of understanding between the Lewis County Board of Education and Grow Your Own West Virginia Pathway to Teaching Path, Grow Your Own West Virginia Pathway to Teaching Pathway, and an institution of higher education effective for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Do you have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
All seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Consider and approve the agreement between Lewis County Board of Education and Amerigis Healthcare Staffing Incorporated to provide staffing services effective August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Do you have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
What does this incur? What is this?
This is giving us the opportunity to work with this company to gather special education teachers to come in and be physically present. Most that we've worked with want virtual teachers in classrooms, and this was one that gave us the opportunity to have actual people in classrooms.
That sounds better, yeah.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Consider and approve memorandum of understanding between Lewis County Board of Education and Glenville State University for dual-credit pathway agreement for health sciences, social services, business management, criminal justice, Grow Your Own West Virginia Teaching Pathway, effective for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Do you have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Consider and approve the Prevention Resource Office Program, Pro Program, agreement between Lewis County Board of Education and Lewis County Commission, effective for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Superintendent updates?
Just a couple of things. I have been to Leading Creek and Peterson and have visited classrooms and spent some time with some kiddos. I am at various conferences this week, and the last thing that I really wanna mention is, in the last couple of weeks, we've had some pretty difficult days in Lewis County schools, and I want to thank our staff for
schools, and I want to thank our staff for the work that they've done. Many of them have gone out of their way to check on our students, make sure everybody's safe, that things are happening the way they should be for our kids. So I just wanna make sure that our staff gets recognized.
That's great. Board comments. Mr. Holden?
Yes, as some of us have attended the conference in Charleston, down in Charleston, down there, there was a few things brought up that I think was on a need-to-know basis. It was, it was a good conference. Would like, and I think we done this last, I can't remember if I did, Mick Goodwin passed away, and I worked for Mick when I drove a bus, and he was a good fellow, so my understanding, he was, he'll be missed, so I just wanted to say that.
Mr. White?
Yeah, I wanna thank the FFA kids for decorating, helping out with the downtown Weston boxes. I also like to thank the Key Club for helping at the F R N, the Health Department, and they also helped get the food handlers kids for the baking, for the baking and pastry students. And I think that shows good community involvement, but my biggest thing is, well, I'll go off mic, what we're having and what we see here is in red, and it's almost in every school is, we've gotta get these kids to school. We've gotta do better, but we can't do any good with them if they're not in school. We in this county, we've got to do better to get our kids in school.
Anything else, John?
That's all.
Mr. Bush?
I'd like to second what Mr. Holden said about Mick Goodwin. Also, Tom Blake passed away, and Tommy Blake was a service personnel for the school system for many years. So our thoughts go out to Tom Blake's family also. That's all I have.
Mr. Bailey?
Yeah, I just have a, I have a couple of quick things that I wanted to, wanted to talk about real quickly. And, and one thing that was still a little troubling to me that I'm gonna, gonna bring up because I heard it from several folks out and, out on the front lines, and it has to do with the time clock. Apparently, we went to some sort of other virtual timesheet, and, and I got a little bit of an issue that we didn't do a good enough job communicating that we were gonna do that when, when we did that. And, and I made a few calls to some other counties today, and, and they don't do it that way. And, and through the call-out system and a few other ways, but, but I still think it's a slap in the face to our folks on salary, our educators out there. And it caught me off guard when we made that change, and, and I'm not particularly, not particularly happy about that, and I'd really like to find out what other counties do. And if I have to do that myself, I will. You know, I understand that there may be reasons that, that we have to keep track of things and get it down to the state, but if I have to make those calls myself, I will to find out what, what these other counties do, because I talked to three today, and, and none of them do it the way, the way we're doing it now. The, the other thing I wanna stress, and, and I don't know if I should say it here or not, but we've gotta start, in this county, in this community, and right out of this building, we've gotta start pulling the rope in the same direction, because there's so many instances that we're not, guys. We are not. And, and if you don't see it, then, then, then you're not listening. And I'm not sure we're listening very well in here, and it's gotta change. I'm telling you, it's gotta change. So, I mean, we can, we can talk the talk, but it's time to start walking the walk. I mean, we gotta listen to these folks out in the field that are, that are having, that are having problems. And, and, you know, it's not all negative. I mean, there's a lot of, lot of good stuff going on out there. I mean, we had that accident, you saw folks come together and, and, you know, prayers to all those people involved in that. But, but again, you know, I just, I hate to be, I hate to be negative, but, but, you know, that we gotta make these changes for the, for the sake of our students in here. There's still, there's still a serious lack of communication out there. I hear, I hear it every day, every single day. And, and, I mean, people tell us a little bit more maybe than, than they'll tell others, you know, because, because we're out there in the community. But, but, you know, something's gotta, something's gotta give. We gotta, we gotta get better. And I've been here a couple of months, and I'm probably wearing out my welcome today already, but, but I appreciate the opportunity to say it.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things, and, and Dr. Stewart, I know you're probably kinda blind on this one too, that, that ALC, we still chugging along for January? That's, that's great. Couple of different positive things, as I visited Peterson, Peterson Central, I talked to some kids, and, and they're really, really happy with the potential of them getting some input on what they eat. I don't know, I'm sure it's in Roanoke, you know, there's some things, there's little ones like it, there's some, but, and allowing them to have a little bit of interjection into it, I think that that's, that's gonna be helpful. So I gotta say that I think that, I think we're heading in the right direction with our, our nutrition. And then, and secondly, one little fella, and it's my fault, I probably should've got a hole that far in beforehand, but his suggestion was to have sunblock dispensers at the schools. Thought that was kinda wise, very wise, actually, but I understood there could be some medical reasons why you may or may not be able to do that, but I, I gotta give little fella credit for that. So we're listening to him, and that's what our job is. Outside of that, everything else, I echo the sentiments of my colleagues, and that's it. When is our next board meeting, ma'am?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth? Okay. Our next board meeting will be September fourteenth?
No, October.
I'm sorry? October fourteenth.
At Roanoke.
At Roanoke? All right.
LSNC will be at five.
I like it. So we'll be up there next, two weeks, right? Okay. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. The meeting will conclude, it is now six.